It is December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, ten o'clock on this meeting. The order of roll call. Hamill.
Here.
Smiley.
Here.
And Murphy, here. Okay, number four, approval of the minutes of the last meeting, November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. Any additions or corrections you guys see?
I don't have any.
It looked fine to me. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion here. There you go. For five, approval payroll warrants and claims. I'm moving to you so.
Uh, what?
Uh, payroll warrants and claims.
Moving.
He did, second.
Yeah.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
I couldn't think.
I know payroll's for the continuity and all.
Oh, okay.
That's a heavy one.
But it's considered payroll.
Okay. Number six, discussion of possible action regarding bridge inspection. And report of conference between Woods County and CDA for invoice six-seven, six-two, five-three. And that invoice will be paid by ODOT. It's just on those bridge inspections.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
All second. All in favor, aye.
Okay, so here's that sign. And then was it your bridge? It's your bridge, right?
Yes.
So I think you're still the one that signs down there where it's county records.
Anything for this one?
I just, uh, I released a bridge, uh, that's what we just said.
Yeah, there's all three of those.
You'll sign this for the inspection on it.
Okay.
Same grid. Okay, number seven. Well, go ahead, John, I'm signing that all over. Approved, disapproved, monthly reports for the following, assessor's office, county clerk, court clerk, health department, traper's office, and electoral board. I see the sheriff's not on here.
Right.
You've got all of them that you got on here.
Yep.
I'm moving to approve those.
The ones that's on there?
Yes.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
There's a couple of them sitting on the bunches.
I know, there's a bunch of them in there.
I didn't look, I think there's just one page in there. There.
I think, yeah, just the top one.
Okay. Okay. Number eight, discussion of possible action regarding monthly appropriations.
See if you can.
Yeah, damn. Well, uh, okay, this, this one, yeah, I'm gonna say they're down a little. A hundred and nine thousand, hundred and nine-five for all three. And that includes, that eighteen?
Is included.
Is what we get from the, right? Okay.
Yep.
And then the, just so you know, John, I mean, and that, the CBRI is a little over eight thousand.
Just kind of hung in there for a minute.
Mm-hmm.
Do you need a motion or?
Oh, yes, sorry about that, yes.
Oh, yeah, we already did.
I made the motion.
You made it in your second as I thought.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? I don't, I, I'm, I'm so screwed up, I can't even remember whether we did it or not. Does everybody in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, aye. Well, okay, we're good to go. I, I didn't think anybody was gonna deny what we're getting to put in the account, so. But I, you wouldn't get me to attest to whether we did it or not.
Did he leave Steve back after work?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then on Friday, we had to send him home because he got sick. Yeah. And he had just been, you know, and the money that he took, he got real tired. I kept telling him, you need to just go on home. You, you're, you're.
Something wouldn't work.
But, yeah, but he wouldn't do it. And then by Friday, he was sick again. But he's back out here today. So maybe over the weekend, he got some back.
Who, uh?
Steve Culkin.
Oh, and he's had?
Oh, he had a bad, I guess. From the way he was talking, it sounded like it was pretty bad. And then Chris, I mean, she didn't have, she didn't hardly have any symptoms.
Chris in your office?
She said it was just like having a sinus infection.
That's what turned it on, had it. She. Some people that get, some people that don't.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, did you see that basketball player, I forget which college he was for, but he was ranked, figured to go, his college, figured to go nineteenth in the draft this year. And like two or three months ago, he had COVID. He was playing and just had, he, he was pretty awesome and showed it, and they had like a timeout or whatever, walked over to the, to the bench as a group, and he collapsed.
Oh, wow.
And they, they packed him out there on stretcher, and that was Saturday, and I didn't hear anything about it yesterday, but, and they don't know that, that that was it, that this COVID deal they talked about could, on some people has some kind of, could have an effect of some kind on your heart.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, but I think he was two to three months over past having it.
Wow. He just don't know what this is gonna be.
How long it's gonna run up?
It's gonna affect everybody, yeah.
Back on you or?
I had a man that had, several weeks ago, in a restaurant, I talked to her Friday on the phone for a while, and she told me that they made her drink and drink and drink and drink. I mean, just, just.
Did the rest of the dinner?
Every time she could possibly drink something, she'd drink it. And, and they were feeding her.
What was that?
Pity life.
Oh, yeah.
She said, you gotta stay hydrated.
Mm-hmm.
I'm.
Oh, that's so.
Do you hear so much stuff, eat a void, please, whatnot?
Mm-hmm.
Talk to me, three, you help.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you don't think, you know, I mean.
There in the bottle?
Yeah.
Did it help you always lie?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Number nine, discussion of possible action regarding resolution to waive remaining balance of fifty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars owed by Avar and Real Bar for the GO bonds. And in that resolution, oh, in this resolution though, did you get that in there, Shelley, about for emergency, I mean, for? I don't see it in this one.
It's not in there, am I correct? Okay, so I'll need a write. And down here.
Okay.
And I'll just do that.
Yeah, and what that resolution says, I had her add this anyhow. It, but it, for economic development purposes. Like, they hired a, a private consulting, a private firm to, uh, entice. They think they can bring new business down there. So this, that's what those GO bonds were originally for, anyway, to help new businesses in that kind of aspect, so, uh, I think the money is.
But this, this is hired somebody out that does that.
Yes, and these people have worked for commerce, I mean, they know the angles and, and that, and I think that's what that bond money is, it's just carrying on a little bit more to do what, what the intent was. So, I mean, are you guys good with that?
I'm good with it. I think you need somebody that's outside of the bond. If I'm with it, bringing some business and probably, you know.
Well, and that's why I, I had Shelley.
That's what it's all about.
Add to the resolution that this is to be used for only for economic development purposes, so, that way, it, it's not for them to pay their bills, is what I'm trying to say.
Right.
I think that's important.
And so.
We need a motion.
Yes, please, they're the resolution here. All right. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I might type that on there. I think it took forever, I don't know.
But there you go.
Do not all get over it.
Tell them yet.
I can't even remember about the motion.
You're saying something like, say, go off.
Okay. And just to clarify that deal, Mary Ellen, is what the deal is, is they got those GO bonds and we went in to help them out, and the county paid those GO bonds off, and they were repaying us at, and, in a seven-year period, and this was left, I mean, it, in the next year or two, they paid off completely. They've been doing what they said they'd do, but we did, we were thinking this was a good place for that to go back to, instead of drawing it in here, let them use it to try to entice businesses to kind of the Real Bar. So, all right, moving on, number ten, discussion, possible action regarding the temporary easements for gravel with the friends.
Yeah, we've got two of them.
What's your deal, John?
Yeah.
One's for Cory and one's with Royce.
Okay.
And that's the agreement on the, uh, the land, I guess.
Okay.
Waiting on the girl. She said she signed it, she just hasn't got it mailed yet.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm, I'm gonna probably wait till I get hers before I start picking any gravel up.
Well, do you wanna wait till you get hers to approve the whole thing?
Nah. It's, I don't think I have to do that.
Okay.
Just go ahead and approve it.
Okay.
And I'll just wait until I physically get it, you know?
First, okay.
I'll second.
But that, yeah, that's a motion. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Where is that, John?
It is a half a mile east of County Road four hundred, or it's a mile and a half east of the twelfth curve. Does that help you? Between four hun, if there was a County Road four-ten, it'd be right there beside it.
I've been going, I didn't know that, you kept it down.
It's just a, uh, it's a location that, that they were gonna drill. They rocked it, and they had them earthquakes down the road, so the corporation commission wouldn't let them rock it. But it has a, a little bit of rock left, and it's been soil cemented, so it's.
Oh, yeah.
Solid, and I just basically needed for a little parking spot and to stop pile rock, uh, basically, I'm gonna use it for.
I didn't know the friends even had.
But it's got power on it? I think there's two hundred acres.
Really?
They were, uh, their grandparents was, uh, a Corbin.
I've been going.
And that's where they got that.
I know those, those friends that are, live out of my district, used to go down there and run cattle on. Well, that'd be the kids.
Yeah, that's their kids, yeah. They're inherited from one of their grandparents, I'm assuming. Okay. Number eleven, discussion of possible action regarding the resolution to execute that certain project agreement for bridge approaches over Salt Fork River on north-south two-nine-four-oh, point five miles north of east-west one-forty, CN, uh, two-four-one-B, project number J three, four-five-six-one, double zero four, RV, state job piece number three-four-five-six-one, oh-four, by and between Woods County and ODOT.
That would be mine.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Okay, I'm gonna go and do number twelve, and we'll pass these at the same time. All in favor of that one?
Aye.
Okay, now I'm gonna move right on to number twelve, because it's the same deal, right, David?
Right.
Okay, number twelve, this discussion, possible action regarding the project maintenance, financing it, and right-of-way agreement for bridge and approaches over Salt Fork River Bridge on north-south two-nine-four-oh, point five miles north of east-west one-forty, CN, two-four-one-B, project number JP, J three, four-five-six-one, double oh-four, RV, state job piece number three-four-five-six-one, zero-four, zero-five, zero-six, zero-seven, by and between Woods County and ODOT.
Moving on, so accept that. My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Terry, that's what they have.
John.
They have to read all of it, like, oh my gosh.
Well, I'll read it fast enough, if I screw up, they'll have a hard time catching it. Very well screw up on those numbers right there. As long as you got the numbers in there right, that's all that matters. Oh, this is what we did. Okay, we're taking no action on thirteen, so we'll move down to fourteen. Discussion and possible action regarding the REAP grant, number WD-two-four-dash-one, contract for Real Water District number three for water tower rehabilitation on two towers in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. And that is for a REAP grant application.
I'm moving to you so. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess, I just need to sign off on this, shall we?
Uh-huh.
Number fifteen, discussion of possible action regarding transfer of appropriations from general government sales tax M and O account to the general real water project account in the amount of fifty thousand. We, we, do we do, just, we do that before they awarded it?
That, that is the award we were awarded it?
Oh, they got approved for.
Yes, they got approved for it, and then, so I'm going ahead and get the money in there in case they start making.
I'm good, I just didn't know they got it, uh, approved.
I'm moving to you so then.
I'll second.
This, this latest REAP grant, right?
Yeah.
Yes, we did, yeah.
What we just did, I guess, was the approval.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. About, about all in favor, so.
Okay.
We signed three places, or?
Uh, at least one of you needs to sign all three places.
I'll sign in three places and let the other guys decide how many times I want to sign. But sign the bottom one, please.
I'm pretty much a gentleman, I should bring it down.
Well, need some, awesome, but, hell, I'm right there, you know, I'm watching people. Very deserved. All three places?
It's your choice. But mainly the bottom one.
What the hell, I've already signed it.
There you go.
Thank you.
My hands are already moved, so.
Okay.
I didn't sign it four times.
Number sixteen, discussion of possible action regarding the resolution to accept the new two thousand and twenty drug and alcohol testing policy for Woods County. And I think this is the resolution that's set up by ACO, right?
Yes.
Okay, do you guys want to go over this, or have you?
Is that the CDL deal?
It's got, it's got that in there.
It's got the CDL, it's got the safety sensitive, it's got everything.
It doesn't really change though, is it?
No.
Well, it's just, we haven't adopted a policy, actually, it's just, uh.
We haven't adopted this new.
Officially?
Yeah, this is an official deal.
Again?
No.
Uh, I'll make the motion that we approve and adopt this resolution that, that it will be added to our policy manual for our, our employees.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, this is.
When do we start? When do we change to this policy?
I guess that's up now.
Right now?
Mm-hmm.
And on that same note, it doesn't pertain to this, and I don't know that we have to vote, but there is, this is just on that deal, and Amy can explain it better, but the CDL drivers have to be put in a database, I, I forget what you call it.
It's called, it's called the clearinghouse.
The clearinghouse.
Clearinghouse.
And they have, she's gonna have to give us our secretaries or our crew, they each have to have an email address, and this is a federal law that, we don't need to adopt it, we just, they've got to do it. If you've got a CDL, you've got to do it, and.
All, all CDL drivers have to.
Even me.
Huh?
Even me.
Yes. Because by, if you're not in the system by year two thousand and twenty-three, when you go to renew your CDL license, it's gonna be suspended if you're not in a query. It doesn't have to, John, it doesn't necessarily mean that you have to be on the county's query, because you're, you're going into a query on this, but you have to have, you have to be in a clearinghouse query.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
We, yeah, uh, no, not right now, but I will, um, send them to your sheds.
Okay.
If you'd like, and then, um, Grant will be making up, because every employee will have to sign that they understand it. So.
Got it.
We'll be sending those, or we'll get that one too.
All right. Number seventeen, discussion of possible action regarding six-month bid, number twenty, twenty-one, oh-two.
Well, you got plenty.
Well.
Look at all them. Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna make the motion, I'm gonna give Jennifer, our purchasing agent, the ability to open those and to classify them like she does, or categorize them for us, and right now, that's the only approval is for her.
Second that.
Is my motion, yeah.
And then we can break them back.
Yes, and then once she gets that done, we can look at it and go through them.
By about two, seven, three?
And a dollar.
Two oh-two. Two oh-two.
I'm gonna hold you to it.
Do I've got a second?
Yeah, I'm second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Number eighteen.
Thank you.
Any new business?
I.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Okay, I got a call this morning, the health department is wanting, and I sent them for, uh, event for, but they would like to have verbal permission, if possible, to set a tent out on the courthouse lawn on December twenty-second. They're not sure on the time yet, what time of day they're gonna do it, but they wanna do the COVID, they wanna test, anybody that wants to go test for COVID can come and go and be tested there. And I said that I figured you guys would do that.
Yes, I mean, yeah, different from me, anytime, anyplace, anyhow, yeah, whatever to help with this deal.
It's just the Neil Brain swap or what's going on?
I don't know which one it is, but.
Doesn't matter, I'm good.
Yeah.
Um, windmills are about twenty, they got about twenty of them up. Uh, I got some specs back on the Avar Lake from the engineer.
Okay.
He sent me a, what, a bid list, I guess?
Yeah.
From Woodwood?
Okay.
A supply list?
He, the engineer, um, suggested a three-eighths can, that's the run-in, and a quarter-inch pipe.
Okay.
I went through there and told Jennifer, I'd like to see that doubled, instead of a quarter-inch pipe, half-inch thick pipe.
Okay.
Instead of three-eighths thick can, one-inch thick can, or three-quarters inch can, God, that'll. That'll probably double the price, but. Can you get them, that thing? Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah. I didn't know if they were available, I mean.
And she went out for bids.
Yeah.
Sent them out for bids.
Did out to, uh, Vescow, uh, I think the rail yard in Joe. It, it should be, and, uh, it should be taken care of forever. There's some, yeah, that's, that's all I, there's, uh, there was, uh, ten yards of semen, I'm, you know, ballpark, just a guesstimate, fifty thousand, maybe? Um, just depends, uh. Are you still gonna get some assistance, or do you? Well, I talked to the Fish and Wildlife guy, he's still checking, it's, it kinda come down to the wire on us, but whether we're gonna get it or not, I don't know. Doesn't sound like it, but I'm gonna keep on it. I got one question, and it's because I ran into this with the FEMA deal.
Uh-huh.
Have you got it cleared through the Corps of Engineering? Is this still clear?
It's the Water Resources Board.
Uh, yeah, the Corps?
Well, the Corps, the Water Resources Board handles this part of it. I've checked, you know, whether that's the Corps Engineers deal or Water Resources Board, if it's a blue line.
Yes.
Corps.
Yes.
If it's not, it's Water Resources Board.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure, they don't.
Blue line?
No. Okay, I just wanted to be.
It's not a live stream.
Okay.
Why the one piece of town is.
It's not, it's not a live stream either, but it.
I've got one, I'm in a wheat field that don't run water unless it rains, that runs it for ten minutes.
But, yeah, that.
And it's a blue line.
I just, I just didn't want us to do something, and then we have to go back and tear it out, because they can be really tough to deal with.
That was the permit that we were waiting on through the, the Water Resources Board, this damn, that damn engineer, that's how it's put. It's the guy that engineered the pipe and turned it into the Water Resources Board, and they said, yes, that's okay, or no, that's okay.
Well, here's, you know where we talked about building the pond on the rail park?
Uh-huh.
That deal, the, where that concrete culvert's under the rail.
Yeah.
That is not, uh, uh, all that is is a drainage ditch, but that is a blue line.
Yeah, that's what I.
That's why I wanted, I just wanted to be sure, yeah, you know, because they can be really hard to deal with if you don't.
Oh, I got laid on in Wood now, David and I did, by some guy from, I, never mind.
Uh, but, yeah, that's all my new business. Okay.
The breast can, or, you know, breast, uh, bus, the kind of, the breast.
Oh, okay.
That work.
Manogram deal?
Them grams, they wanna come on March twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
Whatever they wanna do, I get it. Okay, number nineteen, approved, disapproved blanket purchase order.
I'll move and do so.
Ball second, all in favor?
Aye.
Number twenty, motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. Aye.